You're watching Cable 2.
Welcome to the August 22nd, 2017 Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board Meeting. We are glad that you are with us tonight. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an Imocation. If you will all please rise and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us. And we are grateful that you are a God of love and a God that filled our hearts with the Spirit of love. Lord, we are excited about the start of a new school year. And we ask that you be with our staff that are back and some of our students that are already in school. But next Monday, be back with all the many yellow buses and walkers and car riders and young high school drivers as they come to their first day of school. Lord, we just are blessed with the resources that we have in this community. Lord, let us gravitate to those things that we can control and focus on the positives that we have within our district. Lord, we ask if you take away any anxiety from our students or staff members as they start a new year. Just give that to you, Lord, and let us just focus on the excitement and all the new opportunities. Let everything that we say and do, Lord, be pleasing to you. In your name we pray. Amen. May be seated. So Board members, we have a few changes to the agenda tonight. First, we would like to remove Discussion Item A, and that's the Ashley Global Academy Request for Smod. We will also remove that from Action Item A. We would like to add to the Discussion Item, we will add G, and that would be the Curriculum Committee Report. We also have one addition to the Action Items, and that would be Item M. And that would be to add the adoption of salary schedules from the Proposed Policy 4141 and school administrator formulas distributed to us on August the 21st by email. It's a long addition. Do we have any other changes to the agenda for this evening? If not, do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Singletary. Do I have a second? Mr. Barr? All in favor? Wonderful. Thank you. So we have one speaker signed up on an agenda item this evening, and that, I believe, is Rachel. Yes. I'm sorry, Rachel, what is your last name?
Rachel Aitzen. Good evening. My name's Rachel Aitzen. I'm a representative of the Team Strangely Union, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our members who are bus drivers in support of the changes to the bus driver pay scale. We lobby as a union every year at the General Assembly for wage increases for classified school employees. And the last eight years have been a little tough, but this year we had a great victory in having a line item included for the first time ever, $16.8 million, to raise bus driver pay across the state. And also included in that was a bus driver pay and study commission to study pay and retention of school bus drivers. Our union worked closely with Representative Nelson Dollar to bring the issue of low pay of school bus drivers and the bus driver shortage to the forefront of this year's House Budget Proposal, which was then included in the final budget. I'd like to thank Forsyth County School District, Winston-Salem Forsyth County School District, Dr. Emery, the School Board, for your leadership and support of the school bus drivers in this district. I'd like to especially thank Darryl Walker, Darryl Taylor, Chris Cox, and Wayne Loughlin, who attended a meeting with us in Raleigh that we scheduled with Representative Nelson Dollar to talk to reinforce that this was a need to increase bus driver pay and that the shortage is a real problem. And I would also like to thank Kerry Crutchfield for the changes that he proposed to the bus driver pay scale. They are significant. They really mean a lot to the employees here. And we encourage you to adopt the proposed changes, which includes having one pay scale where there would be no difference between part-time and full-time, and includes a higher pay rate, starting pay, where everything moves up. And it really recognizes, includes a step increase, but it also recognizes the folks that have been here for a long time and getting a substantial pay increase where they've gone years without pay increase. So we just look forward to continuing to work together on this because we do have that study commission and going back to the General Assembly for more money to continue to increase bus driver pay. So, thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comments on agenda items, and we will roll right into our discussion items for the evening. Board members, Andy Kraft's going to come forward and discuss the alternative schools accountability model. But I do want to know that if you are looking at your agenda on paper versus the iPad, there is a little bit of difference in the discussion items. So I'm going to, we're going to go by the paper item. So basically, what has been left off of the discussion printed item on your iPad is that we will talk about the Contract for the YMCA. Okay? So the paper agenda is the one that's published. It was just not loaded up to our electronic. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Sure. Madam Chair, Dr. Emery, members of the Board, every year I bring to you the options for the accountability model that will be used in our alternative schools. The options are the same this year, and I'll just remind you that we have these alternative schools that you see in front of you, six alternative schools. And it's appropriate that these schools be measured by a different accountability model. You have four options to choose from. These options are provided by the Department of Public Instruction. The first option would say that these alternative schools just participate in the regular accountability model. The second option would say the scores from these students go back to their home schools. The third option, Option C, which is what we recommend this evening, is that the alternative schools participate in the alternative schools progress model. I'll explain that to you a little bit. And the fourth option would be that we develop our own alternative accountability model. So, as I say, it is our recommendation that we use Option C. And under Option C in the alternative accountability model, 20% of the school performance grade is based on student persistence. That is, the students remain enrolled in a North Carolina public school throughout the end of the year. 20% is based on achievement, measures like EOG, EOC. And 60% is based on school growth. Based on these criteria, the schools are given one of three labels, and that is progressing, maintaining, or declining. For the past several years, we've gone with Option C, and it's our recommendation that we continue to stay with Option C for the alternative accountability model for our alternative schools. Are there any questions?
Questions, Board members? Thank you, Andy.
Thanks very much.
So next, I'll recognize Amy Nail. No? Amy's like, no? iReady contract?
I think I got delegated to that, yes. So apologies there on whether it was the paper or which version, right? Board members, I sent you earlier the parameters that we have used for software instructional programming. Last year, we made a commitment to more thoroughly vet contracts before they came to you. This is the first of those. The others will, you'll see less of because we've done a really good job of working on what, how do we match what goes on in schools to that comprehensive needs assessment. Last week at Curriculum, we had a little preview of iReady and the work that goes on in summer school. I think we can see the quality of iReady when we use it like that with fidelity. You have 28 schools here, and the language in the recommendation says 28. On the chart, it says 29. There are 28 schools here. Schools that use it for part of core instruction will be the ones where you would see larger dollar amounts. And each of the instructional superintendents has gone through and vetted how that will be used, the way the program is designed to be used so that we see maximum benefit. Where you see smaller amounts, schools have opted to use iReady and buy enough licenses to really do intervention and remediation. So several middle schools, you'll see smaller amounts here, are using it differently. And so in those cases, we have to challenge folks to actually look at how do those individual students progress because the reports that we get from iReady may not be as holistically indicative as if the whole school is using it. iReady tells us that in order to see maximum benefit, a student needs to use this for a minimum of 45 minutes a week. And after our first-year review, we saw schools that really saw a direct correlation. One of those, I will lift up Louisville Elementary School. When you get your data, you're going to see what's the State Board approves it. And they can show you very clearly how use of this with the integrity that it's intended to have helped them with students and raising achievement in their school. So that was sort of the window that instructional superintendents used as we approved these Title I budgets and decided what would come to you for what made it here tonight. I do want to thank Sam Mills and Dion for collecting them all so you don't get these piecemeal. They're all together yet one. While these are individual site licenses that the schools are paying for, we wanted to bring them all at one time. And so I would be happy to answer questions. Amy is also ready to answer questions that I can't answer if you have them about this contract.
Board members, do you have questions on the iReady contracts? Thank you. Next, I'll recognize Dion. I'm going to roll the dice and say, Dion, you're really going to talk about the YMCA of Northwest North Carolina contract? Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. I want to provide a very brief overview of the YMCA contract that is before you this afternoon. Previously, when we presented the Contract for Approval, there were some questions about whether or not certain programs were continuing and so forth. So I want to just provide you a brief overview of the parameters of the YMCA contract. We've had a longstanding relationship with the YMCA for a number of years for providing app before and after-school programs, as well as 21st Century programs that were previously funded by grants. We also have a relationship with the YMCA for us to use their swim facilities for our interscholastic swim teams, as well as for enrichment opportunities for schools that choose to use them. In particular, with our 21st Century programs, there is a provision in the contract for the continuation of those programs if they can find funding. The YMCA, in addition to several other entities this year, did not receive a 21st Century grant funding. And so they are working diligently to find other resources so that they can continue those programs in those schools. So there is a footnote in the contract that those programs are contingent on being able to find additional funding. One note I would like to make about use of our swim facilities. A couple of years ago, the YMCA was generous enough to expand their pools to allow schools to use their facilities that had previously used the YWCA facilities. When we received notice that we could no longer use the YWCA facilities, the YMCA stepped up to say, "We can make some additional room for you to be able to use our facility." So they are continuing with that pattern. Additional programs in the contract include the Summer Learning Academies. Those schools have the ability to change from year to year based on our summer school sites. So, for example, this year, they did not have a site at Petri because that was a location for a summer school site. So they provide us those locations on or before May 1st of every year as far as where they plan to have their Summer Learning Academy so that they don't interfere with our summer school sites. And then there are before and after-school programs that are offered at select schools. Those schools are identified in the contract. The great thing about the Y is that they provide additional employment opportunities for our teachers where they can to work at those after-school programs to supervise the children. And they do pay a rental fee per site for the use of that facility. A couple of programs that have been removed from the contract, the Winston-Salem Prep Swimming Program. We did go back and confirm that that's no longer a program that they use on a regular basis. So in an effort to streamline what the schools need and to be able to provide the most support, that has been removed from the contract, as well as the free Learn to Swim program that was offered for second-grade students at select schools. We did confirm with those principals that for a number of reasons logistically, it's just not feasible to continue that. So that has been removed from the contract as well. But addition to that, there's provisions for the YMCA to use our facilities in the summer, as well as during the year, for their athletic programs. And there's agreements in place with regard to that as well. One thing that's not in the contract, but I do want to let you know that the YMCA and our operations folks are working on creating some guidelines whereby the Y will recognize our weather advisory restrictions that we put on our sporting events during their events as well. So if we have a heat advisory, for example, and we do not allow certain activities before a certain time, then they will work diligently to comply with those same requirements. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next discussion item will be the Building and Grounds Committee Report. Ms. Lyta Calvert-Hayes.
Okay. We have a lot on our agenda, as we always have a lot on the agenda for buildings and grounds. We're still going really, really hard on that. If you get a chance and you're on Thurmond Street, ride by and you'll see the new road that has been cut through for the Lawrence Paisley job. You might get a little excited really seeing what's going on. We are really there, folks. And, you know, it makes you excited about what our bond is doing and what we're going to have going forth. Also, you know, at Parkland, there's traffic. There's traffic everywhere. But Parkland has got a lot of traffic there, so we're going to improve the student pickup and drop-up and the bus traffic patterns at Parkland. That's on our worksheet to do now. Another thing that I really had never really thought about, and we had an interesting, very interesting discussion today, about our drinking water. How many of you think about your drinking water safety for our kids? Well, our school has. And not only have we taken tap samples, they were collected from 76 schools. And we just came out with wonderful, wonderful results. Tested lead, tested all kinds of chemicals that may, would be detrimental to our kids, to our students, to our teachers, and we scored great on that. So I hope that that will be publicized when people go to the drinking water fountain, that we got an A+. Okay. All our samples were below the maximum amount, and you want to hear something even better than that? It was no cost to the public. So that was done free of charge. No cost to the public. Also, we talked about our laptop lease retirement and our buy-out leased equipment. We have laptops that are over five years old. And we talked about the lease that we're going to be doing on our new laptops. We talked about the bond technology, that's installation and labor, and what was going to happen as far as installing our new technology. So we were busy as could be in our Buildings and Grounds meeting. You know, I feel really, really good about what we're doing, how we're moving ahead, and what we're doing on our bond. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have our Policy Committee Report. Mr. Singletary?
Madam Chairman, Policy Committee met today and had a lengthy discussion in regards to proposed changes to Policy 4141, which is our 2017-2018 salary schedules. It should be noted that it is always a priority for us to make sure that all of our team members, employees, are taken care of. That goes from our classified employees to our teachers, to those who work in our central offices and help us keep those wheels turning. It has been a point of pride and a great deal of effort on the part of this board to help clarify what a local supplement looks like for our teachers, for our principals, and other staff members, taking into account that we cannot impact the changes that the legislature may make in how they pay to our employees. But we can work on our end to at least clarify what we're doing to support our team members. Needless to say, the state at least did a nice job of increasing some of our teacher pay, also helping to stabilize our principal pay and assistant principal pay. We still have some work to do, but based on a general consensus this evening, it was decided that we would move forward with the proposed changes to our salary schedules for this year. And thus, we will be looking at an action item later on this evening so that we can see if we can't get some folks paid by August, the end of August. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Singletary. Next, Ms. Clark with the Curriculum Committee Report.
Okay, yes, we met last week on Tuesday, and the theme was, "What Did You Do This Summer?" So we covered Pathway to K and summer school, which happened in our district over the summer weeks. Thanks to Eva Phillips and Vanessa Osborne, who presented to us and explained that Pathway to K is a summer transition to kindergarten program for students registered for kindergarten in one of our schools. And it's funded by Project Impact Grant. They are a key helper and partner in our district. And so we'd like to publicly thank the Project Impact Board this evening for making this possible. It was a great few weeks in Pathway to K. You know, Dana and I and Dr. Emery visited one day, and we just saw lots of excitement, and not just in the kids, but in the teachers too, and the things that were going on. So lots of learning happened. We had great participation from community partners like East Winston Missional Network of Methodist Churches, who gave a lot of supplies to our kids and to our teachers. And we had parents coming into the classrooms at the end of every day to learn what their children needed to know before they came to kindergarten this fall. The teachers were very excited, and there was a lot of learning in preparation for these children being ready to go into kindergarten. So we're very thankful. It was just a great success. So thank you to Vanessa and to Eva, and again, to Project Impact. And then we heard from Sam Mills and Cheryl Wright, who both did a fabulous job talking to us about the summer school overview. This is the second year that we, as a district, have had control of that program, and we are really seeing some exciting things. We had about 2,000 students in seven elementary schools and two middle school sites that were served this summer. Literacy and mathematics, of course, were the key, using the iReady diagnostic tools to assess the students. That was a key part of it. And we also added physical activity to the schedule. And we talked at length about that and how discipline issues really went down, and kids were really able to focus, which seems like common sense, but it had not been a part of the summer school curriculum or schedule until this year. So just really some fabulous results, some great learning. And thanks again to Sam and Cheryl. Sam did a great job of giving us a really in-depth view of what it has meant for the district and the teachers in the district to be a part of the summer school program. And then finally, we heard from Andy Kraft, our Chief Accountability Services Program Officer. Lord, that's five words in that whole title there. That's too much. I'm picking. And Velvet Simmington, our mathematics guru. And so we have some changes, and I'm just going to read them so I can get them right in the upcoming couple of years in testing and accountability in math. So for the next year, 2017-2018, here goes. Eighth graders enrolled in North Carolina Math 1 will be administered the North Carolina Math End of Course Assessment only. So what this is going to do is reduce testing in eighth grade and the need for high school and middle school math accountability measure. And then also the addition of Math 3 and Math Accountability Measure. It's kind of confusing again, so let me finish what I was reading. All high school students enrolled in North Carolina Math 3 will be administered the North Carolina Math 3 North Carolina Final Exam. And then a random sample of high school students enrolled in North Carolina Math 3 will be administered the North Carolina Math 3 End of Course Field Test. So that's this coming year. In 2018 and 2019, eighth graders enrolled in North Carolina Math 1 will be administered the Math 1 End of Course Assessment only. There's cheering going on. I don't know if you can hear it. All high school students enrolled in Math 3 will be administered the Operation Math 3 End of Course Test. Okay, so anyway, basic. Reduction in testing, hallelujah, we're all saying. And tests administered in high school count for high school. And then Math 1 tests administered in middle school count for the middle school. Now, if you have any further questions, Andy, what is the site they should go to? Okay. Accountability page on the main website, which is under the alphabetized listing, right? Anybody out there, moms and dads, eighth graders who are wondering about the reduction in testing? Go there. The answers are there. Great meeting, though.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. That concludes our discussion items for the evening, and we're moving on to action items. We have 12 action items, so we'll try to move through these. If you have questions, though, Board, we'll stop and have some discussion. So the first item for consideration of action this evening is to consider approval of the alternative schools accountability model. Do I have a motion? Mr. Singletary, do I have a second? Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Wonderful. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have the Consider Approval of the Curriculum Associate's iReady Contract. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Barr, do I have a second? Ms. Parker, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider Approval of the Bridge Tech Solutions LLC Contract. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Calvert-Hayes, do I have a second? Ms. Taylor, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, Consider Approval of Janitorial Services Contract with the Bud Group. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Clark, do I have a second? Ms. Parker, do you have any discussion?
Yes. Again, I feel like it's always important to point out when we use contract services that those people are not our employees and that they will not be able to benefit from the retirement system of the state, and they will not get the kind of benefits that our employees get. And that's why I always don't approve of contracting out our folks.
Thank you. Mr. Barr, do you have comments? No. Lyta, sorry.
Yes. Due to conflict of interest, I would like to remove myself from voting on this.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert-Hayes. Sorry, I cut your name short. Any other discussion on this contract? So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? So we have 62. Right, I counted right? Okay. Right. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will consider the Award of the Lawrence Paisley Construction Testing Materials Contract, which we discussed earlier tonight in the Building and Grounds Committee. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay. Ms. Calvert-Hayes, second. Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Motion carries. Consider the Approval of the Cobb Pediatric Services Contract. Do I, thank you, Mr. Barr. I'm going back and forth between paper and the screen. Do I have a motion? Mr. Barr, do I have a second? Ms. Taylor, any discussion?
Yes, I would like to point out that our district would indeed prefer to be able to hire speech and language pathologists, and the only reason we have not is that we don't have people who want to come work right now. So there's a real difference in that, and I think it's important we know that.
Thank you, Ms. Motzinger. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Consider Approval of Imprintz Contract Amendment and Extension. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Singletary, second. Mr. Johnson, do we have any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider Approval of Alphabet's Contract Renewal and Extension. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Barr, second. Ms. Parker, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider Approval of the YMCA of Northwest North Carolina Contract. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Clark, second. Ms. Parker, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider Approval of the Forsyth County Department of Public Health Contract. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Singletary, second. Mr. Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider Approval of the Centers for Exceptional Children Agreement Amendment. Mr. Singletary, second. Oh, Ms. Calvert-Hayes, sorry, Lyda. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. And next would be Adoption of the Salary Schedules from the Proposed Policy 4141 and School Administrators Formulas, which were distributed on August the 21st. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Singletary, second. Ms. Taylor, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. So that concludes our action items for this evening. We will move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda, approval of the minutes for August the 8th, 2017 meeting, and approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Barr, and second by Mr. Singletary, all in favor? Motion carries. So we have no one signed up to speak? Okay, so that concludes...